The rough start to the school year that my family has had. And so for me being in and out, being able to be here and not be here. We were able to meet several weeks ago. We were supposed to meet last week. Some things went sideways in preparation for, you know, some other things with my family last week. But we are going to start hot heavy in January. So but these are the individuals that we entered, we actually invited to come on to our LSIC last year. Myself, Ms. Reesman, Carrie Davis, who is our librarian, Billy and Robert Holman, who have an eighth grade daughter with us right now, Melissa Skinner and Travis Skinner. They have a seventh grade child with us. Melinda Starcher-Mason also has a seventh grade son with us. And then Kylie Arnold is our members of our LSIC right now. Take a look at the next page. That's our leadership team, myself and Ms. Reesman sit on that. We have a representative for each one of our grade levels. Amber Richards in eighth grade, Carol Jones, who will soon be replaced. She gets to go home or gets to retire her and enjoy her grandbaby. But so she will soon have her replacement taking on the seventh grade role. Alexis Urban has taken on the role of leadership in sixth grade. Tammy Laddie is our faculty senate president. So she sits as one of our standing members of our leadership team meeting, our leadership team. Jessie Moore is our vocational member. And we have our two counselors. And then we added a service personnel this year. So Trisha Benidam is setting as our service personnel member. All right, academic performance. I know that you guys have heard this over and over again, talking about exactly where we are as a county. And I know that with that, it talks a little bit about where we are as a school. So really how I decided to look at it this year was take a look at what we did last, what we wanted to do last year with our strategic plan, what our plan was, what we intended to do. And then talk a little bit about how we did. And I'll give you a second. If I didn't put this in the, you got the data, but I've got the notes that I actually took from it. So one of the things we wanted to do is we wanted to have a 10% decrease in the number of students who exhibited a lack of mastery. So those were the ones that were in that red area that we're looking for, that does not meet standards. And we wanted a 10% increase in the number of students who exhibited mastery. We wanted that for literacy and math, and also in our writing. Writing and literacy both go hand in hand. And then we wanted a 5% decrease in the number of students we designated as at risk in our, in our school last year. So that was what we were looking at with our strategic plan last year. That were our goals. So if you look at our assessment data from last year, I went ahead and just put the GSA scores for math and English. You can see that six, seven, eighth. And I just did it across, so you can cross reference what exactly those, what exactly those scores were. And then just to give you an idea of how we did with that 10% decrease, 10% increase, we had some areas that did make it, that actually did the 10% increase or the 10% decrease, not as a school, but in separate grade levels and for specific content areas. In our seventh grade math, they actually went up three percentage points. Still didn't make it, but still showed some growth. But in our, the one that really, I want to talk a lot, I want to talk a little bit about and give some kudos to is our math in the eighth grade. Our math in the eighth grade meted across. They increased by 10, now mind you, from 17 to 27. Although it's still not a great score, it's still 10% increase in proficiency that we received in one year from being able to go. And this is looking at the students. So this is an oranges to oranges comparison. How did they do in their, how did they do in their seventh grade year in comparison to how they did in their eighth grade year? So that was what I compared. So they went from 17% proficient to 27% proficient when they moved to eighth grade. So that was 10% increase. And they decreased the number of kids that were in the red, which means that they did not meet standards at all, by 14%. So we went from 54% of them not to 40. And then there were some other areas. There was a 7%, or yeah, 7% decrease in the kids who didn't meet standards in reading in sixth grade. There was an 8% decrease in the kids who did not meet standards in reading in eighth grade. They went from 43 to 35%. That's a movement. That means we're getting more of them in that yellow area, which is, you know, that plus or minus 5% to getting them either to not meeting or to meeting standards. So there were some areas that did show, which we could certainly work off of, what we were looking at and what we were doing last year. So we can look at what we were doing and move on. Then I decided to look at it through teachers, like the actual grade level. People teaching the same content year to year and how they did and if they honed in their skills and how well they did. In eighth grade, again, in math, we went from 16% proficient in the 23, 24 year to 27% proficient. They increased by 11, they increased by 11 percentage points, which is where we were wanting to meet with our standard, with our, with our strategic plan. And they decreased our, our students who did not meet mastery from 52% to 40. So they took, they took 12% of those kids out of the red and into either yellow or possibly green. I didn't break into where they landed, but I did look at that. And then in reading, seventh grade, seventh grade was very close. They went from 22 to 31% proficiency in reading. So it was a nine percentage point increase. And from 43 to 33, they decreased by 10, which was exactly what we were looking for in our strategic plan. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of where we were when it came to our, when it came to our, where we landed with our GSA last year. When you look at our iReady reading diagnostic, which that is the next area here, it gives you an idea of where we landed in, where we landed in May. And so what we wanted was 10% decrease. In our strategic plan, we said we wanted it in the assessment data, in our GSA and in iReady. So there were some areas where we really did show that as well, particularly in math. Reading, we're still trying to find that fine tune, find that, we're trying to fine tune exactly how to get these kids to look at reading and take it seriously in iReady. We've changed things up a lot, a little bit about how, with how we're doing iReady this year. But it's still a struggle for us to get them to actually use the instruction, read the, read the information, go through and do the questions and pay attention to what they're doing. We're working on that idea of endurance. You gotta have it. To take any type of standardized testing, you gotta have endurance. And we're still lacking seeing that yet. We know that some of it's vocabulary. They don't understand what they're reading. So we have to hit vocabulary hard to be able to see. If you don't understand what you're reading, you're going to bypass it. And so we're hitting hard on vocabulary, hitting hard on context clues, trying to get in there and figure out where the root cause is for us to then be able to get them to be willing to go in and put that work in, that hard work of reading these things. So that's where we're working with that. But in math, we again saw some incredible movement. In the across the grade level, from the beginning of the year, iReady diagnostic to the end of the year, our red diminished by 12 percentage points. So 12 percentage, 12% of our students that were in red at the beginning of the year came out of it by the time we got to the middle year. So that meant that 12% of the kids moved to either a grade level below or on grade level. Because there's the only two places you can go if you get past red, because I did go through the collective red areas. In sixth grade, our grade level increased by 10%. In seventh grade, they both increased by 11% and diminished their red by 14%. And then in eighth grade, they showed only a 3% increase in their, in their math scores to grade level, but they did diminish their red by 13. So that got that 13% of the kids to at least one grade level below, rather than being that two to three and more grade levels below. So that gives you an idea of where we were with our iReady for last year. All right. So that was the state of our union from last year off of our strategic plan. Last year, we did get to the point where our kids were indeed, we worked really hard, you know, with the SAT process, through Ms. Reesman, through all the times that we would sit down and have conferences with kids, both of us tag teaming discipline, know everybody in this, both administrators do discipline in this building. They, they, and we do it the same. It just looks the same, feels the same. A lot of times we tag team it if we feel like we know that we need to, because we want to make sure that the kid understands we're both on the same page. So we did see that diminishment of 5% in our at-risk kids as well, where we had kids that we were able to get them to decrease their discipline referrals and things like that. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and let Ms. Reesman talk a little bit about her baby, which is attendance.
How we doing? How we doing, Seem?
Pretty good.
Good. Yeah, that, that's my baby. Attendance is definitely my baby. So if you look on page 12, attendance to date, it was up there, man, that last seven days until about a couple of weeks ago, it dropped a little bit. 91%. Last 30 days is at 92%. And year to date is 92.5%. We're definitely seeing across the board, our attendance rate staying above that 90%, which for us is very good. I'll show you here the trend over the last four or five years, we see that trend. One thing we definitely need to work on is our tardies. That's a little messed up. The first column is excused. Sixth grade has 57 excused, but 264 unexcused. Seventh grade, 124 excused, but 291 unexcused. Eighth grade, 89 excused, 238 unexcused. Schoolwide, we have 270 excused, but 793 unexcused, for a total of 1,063 tardies. Most of those tardies come first thing in the morning or at the end of the day. Our biggest thing is just trying to get the parents to understand, you know, even if it's 2:45 and they leave early for that doctor's appointment, it counts against them. You know, so, you know, we're still trying to get that message out of, hey, try to schedule those out for three o'clock. You know, try not to just pick them up and say, oh, I'm in town. So it's 2:30, what's the big deal? Just need to pick them up. That counts against them. That counts when that last, a lot of our kids with our grades, first thing in the morning or at the end of the day, those grades even. So getting that, that out, so they get them here on time and leave, you know, at the end of the day. So as you can see on page 13, this is great. If you look back at 21, 22, no absences issues, okay? There was only six, and the chronically absent was at 69%. And if you look at the trend as we're going down through, last year we had 37% of our students were chronically absent and 19 had no absence issues. But if you look at this year, we have 39% no absence issues and 26% are chronically absent. So as you can see, the trend coming in, the kids are starting to like to come to school. You know, some of the things we're doing with the attendance incentives, the pop-up days. For some reason or another, the culture of the school is changing. Teacher impact, the attendance impact, kids are wanting to come to the building. They're wanting to be in school. So you can see that just from, and last year we only showed, we only showed two years of data on this, but I want you guys to see all the way across for the last four or five years, where you can see that the kids are wanting to come to school with the attendance. Same thing with page 14. You can see by week, we just took from week eight to week 15, you can see, you know, the 93%, that's where we like to be. Last year, week eight, we were going to 93. If you look down three there, we're hitting that everywhere from 91 to 93%. Whereas last year, we around that 90%, even go down to 89. This year, we're trending on the 91 to 92%. So our trend in attendance is, is going upward. So definitely something I'd say.
You would agree that there's a correlation between getting our kids at school with attendance and improving our test scores?
Absolutely. You get them here, they're going to improve. Absolutely, yes.
We can't teach them for an argument.
I agree.
And the same, you're going to see with our discipline, here in a few with our referrals and not putting them out and running the ISS and the suspension. If you have them in the building with those kids that weren't performing and our grades are improving, that we're also going to see our test scores improve, because those kids had low test scores, they're in the building, they're learning, they're not in an out school suspension environment. The ISS is working, so you're going to see the same thing. But if they're here, we definitely should start seeing an increase in scores.
Perfect.
Absolutely. So, and with that, I'll send you back, Mr. Radcliffe, if you need to catch it.
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to. You guys can just sort of see, we put down in here a little bit about our parent community involvement, the different things we do, you know, as the, I mean, I can imagine when this, in the glory days when this was the high school, this was a community hub. I mean, I can only imagine that that was what it was like. I went to school at WI, when WI, that was community hub. Top the hill, that was where everybody went. You went down, you got a Ritz, you had lunch, hot dog. You came back up on top of the hill, that was, and walked over to High Field for the football games. So I can imagine that what this was like. We really want to see that again. I mean, I get that the high school is the flagship, but a lot of people can't make it to the high school, but they can make it to this field. And this field still is gorgeous. This complex is beautiful. And we hear a lot of conversation about how nice this complex is and, you know, how people appreciate for a middle school to have something like this and not have to share it with anybody else. So we truly are blessed. So we like to host the block party for CIS. It's lovely to see all the people here. It was great to, I mean, it's great to sit on my porch and watch the fireworks when H and M sets them off for the trumpet tree. I'm not crazy enough to stand in line anymore, because I'm getting older. And I actually bribed my kid, well, I bribed my kid with a couple of bags of candy and told her that we would just stay home and watch them. So, because it's, it's crazy, but it's, but I'm not going to jump line just because of who I am. So I'm going to stand in line and it's cold. But we like for that to be that way. Even when we had career day, people were, I mean, I'm not sure how many, if any of you got some chance to make it. I know that Dr. Stewart was here, but literally lined up all the way around the track. And what was great this year that I didn't really know, maybe I didn't slow down like last year to pay attention to it, but although we had, we had 30 different organizations presenting and several of those presenters were ROBMS and Lewis County High School. And that was a big deal, because some of those kids were my kids. You know, they were my wrestlers, they were my cheerleaders. They were, you know, my guys that I thought was going to possibly go and do welding or get their hands dirty or work in sales. And it was so fantastic to walk around there and see. You don't have to make a million dollars, you don't have to go off and have your Damon lights. But when you come out here and you get to hug one of those kids that you had when they were playing volleyball for you in eighth grade, and now they're, you know, working as an office manager at Mount Neere RB, that's awesome. That's awesome. And we got to see that. The kids got to see that. And the kids got to hear about how this is where they came from. That, that sticks a lot. Kyle Rogers sat there and gave testimonial over and over again on the corner about how important it was and showing them how to do balance and stuff like that. Talking about, he's like, you know, I cut my teeth in this building right behind you. Those are the types of conversations our kids need to hear. But here's successful people that came from here, came through here, and look at what they're coming back and give. And so that's a beautiful thing. We had a school-wide food drive to benefit the FRN. We always want to benefit the families in this area. And like we said, even if you can't give, you know, whatever, any little bit counts. Cheer on your friends who can give. But look at all of the lovely things we're able to give to this community that aren't going to be able to have if they did, if we wouldn't have done that. We've always, the National Junior Arts Society always does a great job of mental health and suicide prevention month. They collect money in order to give to, in order to donate in honor of one of our former students up in Wardertown at the Suicide Watch. And then just the other day on Sunday, or on Saturday, our kids were ringing the Salvation Army bell in front of the Westin Walmart. So they always get out and about and do that. We've had 19 student assistance teams meetings, so talking about connecting with parents and community. There's been 19 SAT meetings so far since the beginning of the school year to support. That's 19 different kids. Some of them have been in, have multiple meetings so far. We still have a strong presence on our social media on the ROBMS school and athletic page. Our athletic page has changed. We flipped it over, so it's a different page now. I'm trying very, I could not find a way to delete our old page. So we're just not letting people in in hopes to guide them to the new page, because I can't, Facebook won't let me delete it. I made it years ago. We utilize our school websites to share news and information about our students, parents and community. I use phone messages and yes, I believe in, like they'll have to hear my, I like that they hear my voice. So it's rednecky sometimes it sounds, and I definitely have that Appalachian twang. But we do like to update our parents about what's going on. Let them know if there, if we got things, special things going on. And then we use school to keep lines of communication open with parents. And we also make sure to let them know that our K-12 address is also one of those places that you can catch us all the time. And a lot of our teachers actually do better looking at their K-12, because they have it up all the time. It's an expectation in our building to have it up. So that if we need to contact them, we're not doing announcements over the loudspeaker. We're just going to message them to keep them, to keep everything calm. Mental health really hasn't changed much in the building. We still have community care here four days a week, which is a blessing and God sent. Several of our students have personalized therapists that actually come to the building to see them so that they don't have to miss school in order to. They come in, get their hour and walk out. We've got people from WVU and some other different organizations that come. The Mobile Crisis Unit is always available when we have a kid in mental health crisis. So far this year, knock on, we haven't had to call anybody this year. So that, that's, that's wonderful. Rachel's Challenge was presented to our sixth and seventh grade students last year at the end of the year. So now every student in our building has been trained on Rachel's Challenge, because our eighth graders had it when we did our original Rachel's Challenge. That's the, that's the program that comes out of the Columbine shootings, where Rachel's dad had created this program. And so all of our kids have had that opportunity, have had that opportunity to have that training. And through that, we have our Friends of Rachel Club that our counselors are the sponsors of. And they do a lot of different activities throughout our school to support kids, support each other, support the staff through Rachel's Challenge, through the Friends of Rachel Club. Counselors have worked hard to complete their state mandated trainings. And actually, every single student in this building has had all of their state mandated trainings completed. So that's their child, that their body safety, that is their suicide training, all of that that kids have already received. The counselors have been working hard for the first semester to make sure we got that in as quickly as we could. And then they also have been providing lunch groups in order to help for those kids that we have that are in those, that you're going to start talking about when you talk about discipline, those kids that we know are struggling just a little bit, that need to be in that SAT process for discipline. They broke it down and created small groups in order to be able to have lunch groups with those kids, to sort of give them that one-on-one so they can mentor them a little bit about what's going on. All right, and then I will send, I will send it back to my counterpart to talk a little bit about PBIS.
All right. So, another one of my babies. I got a couple of those here. All right. So PBIS, we were able to add a few more people this year. So myself, Mrs. Radcliffe, is able to come to those meetings sometimes. So we have a sixth grade teacher, seventh grade teacher, eighth grade teacher. We added a vocational teacher this year, one of our health teachers. We also added a special education teacher this year. We have an aide, the CIS, the two counselors. And then Amanda Craig comes over from the county office when she's available. So we had a refresher training this fall. We actually were able to go from tier one, we're into the tier two process of that. So we've had all of our tier one training, we're moving into the tier two. So we meet once a month for about an hour, hour and a half. And basically what we talk about is what we're going to do for incentive wise, meet criteria, and then, bless you. And then we talk about positive behaviors and attendance. So basically, we take care of the students that are in the tier two, tier three process. That means they have a lot of behavior issues, so they're at the high level. So we want to talk about what we can do to help them, just besides, okay, they're in trouble all the time. We're done, we're over it. So we basically just say, okay, they're at high risk. What can we do with these high-risk students? Help them, motivate them, get them out of the trouble areas that they're in. So, and then we talk about those high-risk students, what we can do and the different behaviors that we can control, what can we do? We send out things, emails, talk to teachers, behavior support plans, what they're on and what we can do to help them. So as a team, we set these goals. And then we get out to other teachers and say, okay, this is what we can do. We also are responsible for what we see all the way around the schools, the pride expectations. We make sure we push that stuff out to teachers. Working on shirts for the school, for the kids for this year. So those are just some of the little things that we do when we meet as a team. First nine weeks, we were able to do a student versus staff volleyball game. And what you have to do is you have to have a limited number of after-school detentions, limited number of advisory intentions, lunch detentions, no suspensions, no in-school suspensions. And based on that report, you get to go. So your discipline really determines if you get to go or not, okay? Then basically, the students nominated their teachers along with friends. Rachel Club participated in the homecoming parade. We passed out bracelets, stress balls, candy. We do pop-up attendance days. So like September 25th, October 21st, November 20th. What they did is if you're just here that day, our homeroom teachers get a baggie of, if they got 25 in class, so if they're here, got these little stress balls or squeezy. As they enter the room, they may say, okay, Colin, great job for being here today. You know, Jessica, here you go, great for just being here today. And they just get that incentive. And they just say, hey, we're too glad to see you, good to see you. And it's important to call them by name, you know, not just, hey, hey you, good to see you. But it's, you know, Jackson, good to see you, you know, Sarah, way to go, way to be here today. Haven't seen you a couple of days, good to see you, you know. And it's important to call them by name, let them know that, you know, your attendance is great. We try to do those like maybe on iReady diagnostic, you know, days, so the kids are glad to be here. Maybe after a holiday or a day before a holiday. It's an incentive to get them here, because a lot of kids are like, oh, it's parents' Thanksgiving break. Oh, you know, they need to go. But if they know they're going to get something and it's going to be a pop-up day, they're more likely to come, because they don't want to miss out on that. So that helps with attendance. We do the Pride in Action Board out in the hallway. If a kid does something great, teachers put sticky notes, say, um, you know, hey, Rachel, you did something kind, or Rachel, way to go, way to be prepared today. And they put it up on the board. So kids love seeing their names. They love to see when they do great things. So they put it up on the board. We have Potato Head Attendance Challenge. We've already had a sixth grade winner and a seventh grade winner. So they get these potato heads, they got, everybody gets a potato head. So when they have full attendance that day, they get to pick whatever part they want to put on a potato head. Put their mustache on, they can put their hands on their feet, and they can put their nose on their ear. And then however they decorate it in their classroom, it's decorated out here on the board. And the first homeroom to decorate their complete 13 parts on a potato head wins. So they can determine whether they want ice cream a Sunday day or pizza party, or if they just want extra time in advisory to do something for their advisory time. So, you know, that's an incentive. And we've already had homerooms win, they love it. So upcoming, second nine weeks, we got winter games right before Christmas break. We have more pop-up attendance days coming up. And then we have a glow party coming up they can go to. So we'll make the gym kind of dark. We got all kinds of glow sticks, put on some music, they'll have a glow party. So those are all incentives that we do for positive behaviors. PBIS is growing. Since our discipline is down, we don't have a whole lot of tier two, tier three kids, which is great. So mostly just keep our pride expectations in check. Let the kids, remind them all the time, you know, what their pride expectations are, how we can handle them. And we got a great team this year, someone representing every aspect of the building. That's great. So especially putting someone in from special ed this year and vocational was big. That's our PBIS team.
All right. Well, and I will just really quickly, one of the things, I should have probably moved this slide back to the backside, but the professional development, that just gives you an idea of what we've already done this year and sort of what we're looking at. I really should have moved it, sorry guys. Because then she'll be able to pop right into discipline, so I'll figure, I'll just go ahead. A lot of our ready instruction, a lot of our ready instruction with our, with our teachers, we really are looking at a different way to look at our ready. We went, rather than just putting the kids, looking at what they were grade level, we looked at them in their instructional group and put them in because of their weaknesses. And not just their grade level weaknesses, but what are, if they're weak in vocabulary, some kids may have a sixth or seventh grade reading level, but be weak in vocabulary. They need that to be tweaked. So we changed that all around. So we've done a lot of training with our teachers to talk about why, why it's like that. We talk to the kids about why it's like that into the teacher toolbox for their teacher-led lessons, so they understand where to find it, how to go in and figure out what the instructional grouping tells them and where they need to go to get those information. We've worked on special education inclusion training with our ELA. We have consultants coming in and working with that. SRAB came in in October and worked with us on how to unpack the content standards, regardless of what you taught, English, math, vocational. We have PE teachers, math teachers, music teachers, all in the same room, learn how to unpack their standards. Just a couple of weeks ago, our staff, our teachers learned about School AI, which is an actual artificial intelligence specifically built for schools to help them with their, to help make their job a little easier, to help give them some tools in order to take some stuff off their plate. And then upcoming trainings we have, we actually have iReady coaching training. We're going to start that, Ms. Reesman and I are starting that this week for ourselves to go in and realize truthfully the power of iReady and how we can harness it with our teachers. And then we actually have Deb Collin from SRAB coming in in January, and she's going to work with our staff on that focus vocabulary and context clue training. That was one of the things that we talked about, and everybody's getting it. Vocational, math, science, everyone. So vocabulary, those tier three, those tier three vocabulary, that's content specific. So we need to be using content-specific vocabulary with our kids, because they're, I suppose they're going to be be reading on standardized testing, that's what they're going to be reading in the real world. All right.
Discipline. Referrals are down this year. So, this time, last year, we had about five hundred eighty-three referrals in the system. Right now, we're sitting at two hundred and sixty, as of December fifth, as of last Friday. Ninety-two different students have been written up, and the current enrollment of four hundred and fifty-four students. We have forty-nine in sixth grade, eighty-five in seventh grade, and a hundred and twenty-six in eighth grade. So in August, we had twenty-seven, in September, we had sixty-four, October, seventy-four, November eighty-two, and currently, we had thirteen as of Friday. So, that's almost half of what we had last year. Okay, so what we're seeing in the trend is, our teachers are taking more control of their classrooms, first of all, okay? And throughout, throughout the school year, classroom management's played a big part in that, we're seeing, we're also seeing that the kids are, the kids coming in, and the teachers, not only the teachers in the classrooms, but the kids coming in, the expectations, the sixth grade coming in, but the sixth grade going into the seventh grade, they seem to mature a little bit, number one. The SAT teams have definitely played a role, last year we did probably, I want to say at least seventy, at least seventy or eighty SATs last year, and I think having those SAT meetings, moving them into, you know, coming into this year, played a huge role in the discipline, and coming in and already having those SATs set, already having those plans set, pushing the VIPS and the behaviors out in plans in the beginning of the year this year, and starting our SATs early, have had a big play in that. So forty-five students have had two or more write-ups since the beginning of school, ten of the forty-five entered a SAT process for at least, for the behavior, twenty-six of the forty-five have an IEP. Again, twenty-six of those forty-five have had an IEP. So we took twelve of those, all right, twelve of those twenty-six have already had a targeted review meeting to discuss the behavior. So, we jumped right on it. So rather than wait for their IEP meeting in the spring, we've already set up an IEP, a targeted review, for those students and said, okay, these kids are special ed students, but they've got issues, we need to have a targeted review, need to get ahold of case manager, and boom, get them in, get ahold of these, get the parents in here, get these behaviors going, get them fixed, get them done, that. So we've been able to take care of that. And one of the forty-five has a 504. So we've been able to address that process, we run in-school suspension when needed, teachers sign up as a part of the ISS group, and they cover twenty-six total incidents for seventeen different students. So we've been able to have twenty-six, okay? So when we run ISS, basically, they go to a room with that teacher, they sit, nice and quiet, the work's sent to them, they don't get to socialize at all, they go to the class early, they go from class to class, they go to the separate bathroom, they have no social interaction all day long. So, the kids don't like ISS, so it makes it to the point that, no, they don't want to go. Twelve students have been suspended for a total of nineteen suspensions, they have missed, they missed a total of, I don't know, cut off, I don't know what they missed a total of, so many days, cut off. So anyway, so we've had nineteen suspensions, so far this year. But as part of discipline, I know that it's cut in half, and I'm thinking, well, maybe they're just not putting them in the system, you know, a lot of people are like, well, maybe they're just not writing them up, and we have a lot of problems, but if you were to come here and go through the halls, and you would get a chance to walk through the building, and walk through the halls, and see, our halls are quiet, there's some bumping and stuff going on, but I would have to say, the kids are respectful to the teachers, they treat them well, our halls are good, there's work going on in our classrooms, they're listening, they're trying. We're trying to get them ready for the high school, but the amount of referrals that are going in, some of them are for little things, but the ones that are going in, they're needed to go in, but our teachers are absolutely phenomenal. We have good teachers, they become instructed in our classrooms, they're making sure that students are doing their expectations, they're doing their pride expectations, and they're making them learn in the classroom, and that's making a difference. And again, when the referrals are down, and the kids are in their seat, and they're not in the office, and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing in class, their test scores will go up, again. They're not at home, they're not suspended, they're not in the office, and when they're in a seat, they're learning, so our test scores should go up. And that's our expectations for our discipline base. So hopefully we'll see a difference there as well.
All right. So really quickly, we can say school before is the only thing, I mean, we've done all our drills, we've done everything else, the only thing I want to thank you for, more than anything in the whole wide world, and if you want to go take a field trip and see it before you leave tonight, you can, because I look at it every once in a while, get excited. After sixteen years, we have a brand-new fire panel for this building. We have been, the fire panel that we have is so old that there were not, I mean, there's what pieces made for it. And when it came out, and I got that, and he showed me how to turn it on for the first time, I was literally, no joke, ready to, like, tear it. Because it's beeped at me for, it's like, you know, it's nagged at me for the last fifteen years, I already have a nag at home, I don't need this to. But yeah, so thank you so much for the fire panel, it's, I can't thank you enough for that, because that was fantastic. If you go ahead and look at what we're doing right now, this just gives you the September results of our iReady diagnostics, so you could go back and take a look at where we were in May, take a look at that, and where we are now in September. Not a whole lot of backslide with where we were from September, from May till now, which is a good thing, we don't necessarily want that backslide to have to rebuild everything, but that'll give you an idea of where we're at. I didn't really break down one way or another from how we did from year to there, but you have your math, and we have our math and reading diagnostics there, gives you an idea of what our iReady math instruction and reading instruction looks like since the beginning. September fifteenth was the date that I put on here, because that was after we finished the diagnostic, and we're really able to get into lessons, till today. So this tells you exactly how much we have going on between now and then. Lesson time on task is the average amount of time per student spent in iReady since this time is gone. Now keep in mind how we do it, is they do math one week and reading the next, so they're never just in one or just in another. So that's, you can see some, that's why you're not seeing larger numbers than what you would expect, you probably think more, but they're divided between two different types. Practices to promote growth and success, this talks a little bit about how we change up our skills, every student has a thirty-five-minute skill block at the beginning of the day, they work on individualized activities based on their diagnostic data, they work in skills groups based on their instructional grouping, that is different than what we've done in years past. Used to, we would look at, okay, well, this kid's at eighth or seventh grade level, they're going to be in one group, now we're looking at, what is iReady telling us they need? And then we're building them based on that instructional grouping, so that's how our instructional groups are set now. It will change again, we take our diagnostic in January. We hope that maybe we'll be able to have less of our lower groups and more of the middle and higher groups as we move on. But right now, we have it divided to where, you know, kids are exactly where they need to be, and the teachers are teaching that same type of kid in two rotations. They continue to teach either iReady or math, and then they have two different rotations every, they have a rotation every two weeks, they have different kids, or every week they have different kids, and that rotation goes, an A to B. So the kid has the opportunity to have, that twice a month, they have a whole week of this instruction in that specific grade, in that specific content area. Throughout the week, students will have both teacher-led lessons and iReady activities in either math or reading, and students have a math and reading rotation each week like I explained. They are in their professional learning communities, that is what they're talking about. What are they, what skills are we working on in iReady, how are we taking that into our classroom, our English classroom, our social studies classroom, our science classroom, our math classroom? They've started working with Deb Collin from SRAB to focus work in their PLCs, and we're going to start now, having them, now that we're solidified with iReady, how are we going to connect that iReady and start bringing in their content area, standard and material? With the rest of the stuff, you can go ahead and take a look, it's all stuff that we've already been doing, and as Jeannie said, we need it, when we need it, we do run ISS, Act MacRae, we're going one more. Need came up, we're doing it. Outside the classroom, this gives you some ideas of what's going on, thanks, since Mr. Akers is back, even if Mr. Akers wasn't coming back, we were, the plan was, he was going to come and do it extracurricularly with robotics and, robotics and his esports program, that is getting ready to start, once we start the new year, he'll be getting ready to start that. STEM tech is still coming into our science classes, Ms. Jack has been working with eighth grade students, you guys will get to meet here in a little bit, as they have been working with Stokmaier Eurofanes up in Clarksburg, to create a promotional video for a state competition. And then Mr. Moore, this weekend, I believe, just videotaped his second year, his team, his award-winning group, just videotaped their drunk-driving PSA this weekend. So, one of the things we're still trying to get off the ground, and only because I have had a hard time getting this stuff collected to figure out how to get the spreadsheet to the company, ICU is coming, that is a workroom where the kids will go in, and any classes that they have zeros in, they will go back into that workroom and they'll do that work until those zeros are completed. With that being said, thank you so much for listening, I know it was a lot of information, but that's why it's here in front of you. We greatly appreciate your time. And then in, over here, we have pulled pork, if it's bad, I don't know who made it. Macaroni and cheese, if it's bad, I do know who made it, and you can blame him when he comes back to work here in a couple weeks. I had to put him to work since, you know, he's got to get moving a little bit. There's some potato algrotten, there's some chili, and then some desserts, some different snacks like that, so please feel free to eat, there's curd if you like popping, some tea, soda. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
I just wanted to compliment one thing, I much prefer to hear your rednecky voice than I do an AI mark, so I appreciate that. It's so much more personal.
What are you in need of here? What can we do to help you guys?
Well, we have a great new HVAC system, which is fantastic, thank God for the new We got new scoreboards, we bought those, because, you know, with the levy money that you guys have, you know how we have, when the levy passed, and you were able to get money back each year for your ticket sales? Well, when we got our money back, we saved it, and we kept it, and then we got a little bigger check than we expected, and we got two brand-new scoreboards in the gym, so feel free to go see.
Do we need some Wi-Fi boosters?
No, we found out what was wrong. There's, the antenna wasn't, it wasn't positioned in the right direction, on the one that's over here, that was, that was glitching the other night, the antenna wasn't put in the right place. So now that it's facing directly where that controller is.
It's working.
Golden. They took care of it today, so. I would love new windows in the gym eventually, because gosh knows, you guys have paid for air conditioning and heating in that gym, and we've got, we did put new blondes in so that we, that no one sees them, but I do know that energy efficient-wise, we're sort of eventually, you know, you're, we're heating the outside. I would love to see, there are some sidewalks outside of here, it'd be lovely for some of these sidewalks to be redone. They are, you know, as they've settled over the years, we've got some cracks that have settled down farther, we've done as much as we can, but eventually they're going to become tripping hazards, and man, if you're willing to talk about, I'd love to have a beautiful walkway cover, because our kids get dropped off up here at the front, and they walk all the way down to the back door to meet down here. So I would love, that's sort of one of, a couple of my, just because, I mean, they're comfort things, you know, they're aesthetic things, we can take care of a lot of those aesthetic things, some of those things, and, you know, like the digital, I eventually love a digital board, we'll save up our pennies and we'll get ourselves a digital board eventually. But those are the types of things that I really would like to see for our kids, especially that covered walkway and the sidewalks. Because like I said, the sidewalks, really when you're going out here, the new lights, those LED lights are beautiful, they're amazing, they're real bright, so you now see, a lot of times I'm leaving this time at night, it's dark coming out of here before, it was really very dark coming down through here, harder to see those sidewalks, now we can see them a little better, but still, it's dangerous.
Thank you.
Does my Jeannie got anything?
Not really.
I appreciate your comments about the school and being a part of the town.
Oh, absolutely.
I think it's still a big part.
Absolutely, and I'd love to find a way, or the other thing you could do is if anyone can figure out a way that I can keep these gates open without them damaging our rollers, because I know a lot of people complain about why we don't keep the gates open for the field, how, a field, but I'll be honest with you, when we did, those rollers, kids jump on them, kids start hanging on them, kids are riding them back and forth like some type of, you know, amusement park ride, it's going to break those rollers. And so, and we can't just, we used to chain it, like a little open, so people could just walk through it, can't do that with these, it's not how it is. So, you know, but it is, it's a beautiful place in the middle of the town.
I'm all about them digital boards outside, and that show what's going on, what events are going on, you know, we just got that old one out there, and it just sits out there, but a nice board out there that would show what's going on, game night, what's, you know, hey, do like a meeting tonight, we've got this going on, this thing's going on, those are nice, you know, we got a lot of parents that drive by, a lot of things going on that don't get, that a lot of people don't have social media, some people don't have internet at home, know what's going on, but they drive by, but, like that, out front to advertise what's going on, games and things like that, I like those. And again, that's a comfort thing, you know, but.
It's a good idea though.
Well, and the other thing we'd like to do before I forget, Wednesday and Friday, band concert, or choir concerts Wednesday night, six PM, right here in the gym, or you can come anymore, during the day if you'd like, the choir concert's at nine in the morning. And then band is on Friday, the band concert is at two, so if you'd like to come on Friday in the afternoon and get, and hear some lovely band music, that is at two, or there's a concert at six that evening, right here, Wednesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday of this week. Mr. Elam is doing an incredible job. He's exciting, he's enthusiastic, hopefully a lot of you got to see that Halloween video of him marching with choir, fits down the hallways and singing, it's fun, it's fun,